Call the meeting order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Montano will be absent, but he will be joining us in executive session. Councilmember Gleene.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Did you pass out the new agendas for tonight?
The new agendas show that it's six o'clock tonight, but it still does lift the executive session as item three and four. Those will be handled at the end of the meeting to allow for the public to participate in the meeting now.
So at this time, before we get the meeting started, we'll take a moment of silence to remember those that have gone on, those that are fighting for us overseas, protecting us, so that we can make the decision that are good for the town of Florence. Then we'll go to the pledge allegiance and call to the public. Everybody please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. It's a call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion legal action. We ask people to fill out our request to speak forms, and I have three, if I can find them. Uh-oh. What did I do? Well, I know who they are. Dr. Amy Fuller.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and community members. I represent the Florence Unified School District today and came to ask if you will consider revoting for the signage of the complexes. Mr. Harrison came to my office and asked which ones would be better for the children, the ones who are vertically or horizontally. And obviously, I'm here to tell you that horizontal is the way they read, and that would be better for them. So if you could consider voting again, it's probably the same, I would imagine, the same price, and it would be best for the little ones as far as reading is concerned. So thank you very much for your time.
And I forgot to mention, Dr. Fuller is the superintendent of the Florence School System, and I thank you very much for coming making us aware of that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ruth Harrison.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have in my hand tonight the signatures of seventy-seven zero people, residents of Florence, business owners in Florence, and visitors to Florence, who together are asking you, the town council, to reconsider the decision to install vertical signs on the library and aquatic center. The petitions read as follows. "We, the undersigned, petition the town of Florence to choose signs that read horizontally for the future library and aquatic center, recently presented to the town council as option three. We object to signs that are oriented vertically and sideways, as they are unnecessarily distracting and confusing. If signs have already been ordered, simply install them horizontally. We want the children to be able to read them. Please put this item on the agenda for the next council meeting so that you can discuss this important matter and vote in the best interest of the town." Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Reefer.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. This was brought to my attention, too, and I find that as we are doing multiple things on adults, perhaps mature adults, it's easier to catch the information if it's in a standard format instead of rather different. So I would like to see the signs run horizontally, not vertically. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the audience? Seeing them, we'll call to close to the public. Lisa.
Item eight, presentations. Item eight A, presentation by the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce recognizing Holiday Inn Express and Suites as Business of the Month for February 2015 and Pinell County Historical Museum as Business of the Month for March 2015.
Mayor, members of the council, this month, we'd like to actually, for the previous month, Damon had a baby, he wasn't able to be here and accept the award, but the Holiday Inn has been avid member of our community. They always donate their ballroom for the chamber, for Rotary, for all the different groups around here, and we really appreciate them. And lovely Ms. Carmen came up to accept the award today for the Holiday Inn.
Thank you very much, on behalf of Mr. Damon and the Holiday Inn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Oh, they're probably getting their mayor, council, council people. For this month of March, the Florence Chamber of Commerce nominated, and for the Pinell County Historic Museum, for all the work they've done since 1959, they've worked endless hours, all the volunteers, keeping this town historical and preserving all the history of this great town of Florence. So congratulations to the Pinell County Historical Museum for March Business of the Month.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's it?
I'm going to say thank you, and I think if you haven't been to the museum and haven't worked on one of the committees, you're not a member, you're sure missing a good chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Lisa.
Item nine, consent. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time that the item is called. Item A, appoint Natasha Schmidt to the Historic District Advisory Commission with a term to expire December 31, 2015. Item B, appointment of Kenneth Wallace to the Florence Industrial Development Authority Board with a term to expire December 31, 2020. Item C, favorable recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control on the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce's special event license to host their first Thursday's event on April 2, 2015 at Padilla Park. Item D, approve the contract with Overton Builders LLC for the construction to expand the Finance Department cashier window in an amount not to exceed $28,065. Item E, approval of the February 17, February 23, 2015 town council minutes. Item F, receive and file the following board and commission minutes. One, the December 17, 2014 Joint Youth Library Advisory Board minutes. Mayor, members of council, that is your consent agenda before you this evening.
Do any member of the council, do they like to have anything taken off the agenda? I have a question on item C, so...
I did forget to read G, I apologize, sir. The warrant register, the registers of demands ending January 31, 2015, in amount not to exceed $3,42,019.43. I apologize.
Thank you. Yeah, I bet your creditors are glad to hear that. Item C, I'd like to take an off, just from discussion on it with the town staff.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item C.
Second, we have a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda without, with the exception of item C. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On item C, have you coordinated with the chamber on this? Because I know this, that'll be your last music in the park day, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor. We did coordinate with them. In fact, we thought it might be a good idea for them to hold their mixer there in conjunction with the last concert, and might be a good opportunity for them to do a little fundraising while they're there, too. So it was actually by our invitation, we thought it would be a good idea.
I think it's a great idea. That's the reason I was asking about it, because the music in the park on Thursdays is really neat, and I think running that in conjunction together, we may get some more people down there to hear the band. Okay, I have no other discussion either. Need a motion?
Make a motion that we approve, agenda, consent agenda, item nine C.
A second.
We have a motion, second, to approve consent, item nine C. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item ten, new business. Item ten A, discussion approval disapproval to authorize the town manager to execute the Salt River Project Municipal Aesthetics Program Funding Agreement that will allocate the town of Florence's current $500,000 funding allotment and up to $100,000 of fiscal year 2016 funding allocation for masonry wall improvements at the Salt River Project Abel Station, substation in Florence, Arizona. Ms. Eckoff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is an exciting item to bring to you this evening. It's actually our first ever aesthetics program initiative to work with SRP on, in part because we haven't been in SRP territory for all that many years. But when we went into SRP territory going north of Arizona farms, we started accruing the aesthetics funding. And we've been talking to them the last couple of years about a project that we could use some of this funding for. However, initially, we didn't have a whole lot of money to make a dent in any significant project, and there were limited projects to choose from within their service area. As we began to acquire more funds, right now being up to 500,000, and also planning for our allotment of 100 additional thousand in the near future, we realized that the biggest impact that we could have would be to start to screen the Abel Substation, which you can see on your map, which is located at Adaway and Judd. It's in the town limits, but it's also on the edge of the county, and it's on the pathway to the Magma Ranch Development, some other projects that are in the county. So concurrent with us having discussions with SRP, Pinell County also had a certain amount of funds that were coming up to expire, because the funds don't roll over indefinitely. And we all got together, the county, SRP, and the town, and the county has graciously elected to utilize a portion of their funds also towards this project. One, because they didn't want to have the funds roll over and not have them available anymore, but two, also they realized that this is a project that would have benefit to folks that are living in unincorporated Pinell County as well. So we got together, and with our combined effort, we were able to provide a masonry wall, significant wall, that would resemble the wall that you see at other SRP substations in the valley, or maybe in Santan Valley, north of here. But it'll be a very significant masonry wall, and it'll be located mostly around the frontage there on Judd, but also kind of curving around the corners a little bit. Around the remainder of the site, there'll still be a chain link wall, but this will make a dramatic change in that exposure there, right from the road. It'll be a great first project to work with SRP on. There is no fiscal impact to the town whatsoever on this. They do all of the legwork, they provide the funds, they hire the contractors, they design the plans, et cetera. So this is a wonderful program that they have, and we're very excited to be working with them in Pinell County on this first project. And we're looking for you to approve the town manager entering into the agreement to go ahead and pursue this project. And SRP is here tonight as well, if you have any questions from them.
Do any members of the council have a question?
I do.
Go ahead.
I just want to clarify, you just said there was no fiscal impact to the town, but we're allotting $100,000 of the fiscal year 2016.
And I do want to clarify, Vice Mayor, thank you for that point. So that's actually of the SRP funding, and it's not from our funding. So it's everything that we've accrued through SRP today, which is the 500,000, and then our next allotment from SRP, which I believe comes in June, we'll dig into that a little bit, and that's 100,000. But that is not town funds, it is SRP money.
Now, I have a question. Let's say worst-case scenario with the upcoming election, will this money count against us in being expended at that time?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, no, this money is completely separate from our town budget. This is entirely SRP money, and all we're saying is to them is how they can utilize it within our jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Any other question? Maybe it'll also help get away from some illegal dumping that's going on out there that we need to be taking a look at on their property. Maybe you should even get with SRP and find out what's going on, what they're doing, and see what we can do about the illegal dumping out there.
Be happy to.
Okay, any other question? Hearing none, any motion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize a town manager to execute the Salt River Project Municipal Aesthetics Program Funding Agreement that will allocate the town's current $500,000 funding allotment and up to $100,000 of the fiscal year 2016 funding allocation for masonry wall improvements at the SRAP Abel Substation in Florence, Arizona.
Second.
We have a motion, second, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I ain't going to read that long thing.
Item B, resolution number 1504-15, discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, approving a modification to the building permit fee section of the town of Florence Schedule of Fees. Mr. Eckoff.
Mayor, council, this is something that we've had a discussion about a couple of times in the past, and most recently, I had the opportunity to sit down with Councilmember Hawkins and the town manager, and we were brainstorming some options to reduce the fees for essentially accessory residential projects. So that could be in the realm of you're adding an awning to a project, or a large storage shed, or an addition to a home, or you're doing a remodel on a project, those various types of projects. A lot of times, they are done, they're smaller-scale projects, they might even be an owner-builder project for a residential project, that comes up a lot. We wanted to find an opportunity to make those projects more affordable for folks to pursue and to go through the permitting process to do that. So I came up with a, after discussing the various routes to do that, we came up with the options here that you see in your packet. And the main thing that we want to address is really the valuation formula that's utilized for determining permit fees and plan review fees. So a brief summary on how these are all figured out, that I believe almost every municipality, if not every municipality in the state of Arizona utilizes the ICC, the International Code Council, they follow the Uniform Building Codes, a uniform way of assessing what the building permit fees and plan review fees will be. They also follow a uniform way of determining the value of projects. That way, from city to city, jurisdiction to jurisdiction, and even in counties, you have consistency on how fees are collected. And the rationale for a lot of that beyond the consistency is that the ICC bases those fees off of what the cost should be for municipalities and counties to conduct those services, reviewing the plans, processing the plans, conducting permits, conducting final certificate of occupancy inspections, et cetera. So with that said, though, we do believe that there is an opportunity to adjust how the valuation is assessed on the smaller-scale projects that I mentioned, and these would give you a couple more options. So the option is still there, and C, to follow the valuation tables, but there's also the option of the owner-builder or the contractor essentially providing a statement of what their costs are to do the work and the labor. And then they can choose from those and go with what the lowest fee is that applies to them. So in this case, there will be, adopting this, it does have its benefits on one side, it does make it more affordable to do some of these projects, and maybe that encourages folks that maybe didn't get a permit before, or maybe deferred some of this work, to pursue it. On the other hand, it will reduce the revenues that we collect for plan review and permit fees. But there is, we narrow the applicability to this so that it does not apply to somebody building a brand-new home, so whether it's Pulte and Anthem, or other areas of the community where you're building a brand-new home, and also not applying this to non-residential development. So we do believe that it is something that we would like to pursue and evaluate it and assess how it's going, and either modify it down the road as necessary, or review it to see how it's working.
Thank you, Mark. Any member of the council have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
On your item C about the ICC building code valuation, who makes that evaluation?
Member Anderson, Mayor Council. The evaluation tables are set in the ICC books, and every year the ICC meets, they have an annual, so this is a big association. They get together and they evaluate what will be in the codes for the coming year, for the coming cycles, and they evaluate the valuation tables. The valuation tables actually are reviewed on more than an annual basis, and they are based on, and it's, again, it comes from ICC, so it...
No, I'm not questioning the table, I'm just saying, who makes that determination? Is that you, or the county, or...
Oh, okay, so if a project comes in, Member Anderson and Mayor Council, if a project comes in, then you can clearly utilize the tables, because the tables will tell you the type of occupancy that we're talking about, and the square footage. So it's very specific that you can go to the table and you can say, oh, this is X kind of project, this is the type of occupancy, whether it's commercial, residential, industrial, assembly, and then you can look at the square footage, and it's a very clear table that all the contractors and builders are used to using, so they use it, and then we can also utilize the tables to verify that the right category was selected.
Okay, so your office will make that determination?
Yes, and it is very straightforward, that all of the contractors and builders know exactly how to utilize that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then if I understand it right, then that information is provided to the county for assessing the tax rate on that property?
The county will, yes, to some extent. The county does look at the value, the value of all the projects that occur in the county, and then they also do drive-bys and review aerial maps and so forth, and they look at the improvements and try to place a general valuation on them.
And that's the same thing that's happened on a home improvement, if somebody gets a permit, that permit information is provided to the county for, again, addition, add-on to...
The county, the assessors, the departments, yes, they will check the records of all the projects that are built throughout Pinell County, same in other counties, and they will look at the extent of the improvements and whether it would trigger an additional assessment on the property taxes. Again, they also do look at changes in aerial maps from year to year, and they do drive-by surveys all the time.
The, I think it's something you and I have looked at with them more than once, and I'm glad to see it come to their head.
No, I think it's the right way to go, myself, yeah, I think it's overdue.
Need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 1504-15, a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, approving a modification to the building permit fee section of the town of Florence Schedule of Fees.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to adopt resolution 1504-15. Any other discussion? One thing I forgot to ask you, Mark, have you anticipated how much of a loss of revenue this will be to the town?
Mayor, members of the council, it would be completely contingent upon the number of projects that come in on an annual basis, and what the difference is in the valuation that is provided on those. But assuming that there was a savings on permits of, say, 10 permits came in every month at about $250 less than usual, multiplied by 12, it could have an impact of 20 to, 25 to 30,000 or so. But I think at the same time, that, you know, there just may be some smaller projects out there where maybe this does trigger them to come in for a permit to, you know, maybe in some cases, if they didn't want to pay a high permit fee or plan review fee, they might have tried to avoid the process, or maybe if they were deferring something, it can be a savings. It could be, you know, there's a substantial savings if somebody comes in and they, right now, if the tables, for instance, said it was a $30,000 project, and they came in with all the documentation and said it was a $15,000 project, you know, it's a difference between about 400-something dollars and 700-something dollars, so it's, you know, but that would be on a larger-scale project. So we are figuring that in the ballpark on an annual basis right now, based on our economy, it could be in the 20 to 30,000 dollar impact.
Not that much if we want additional growth here in town and people to get the permitting so that they're legal when they do their addition. We have a motion, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item C, ordinance number 626-15, first reading of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, amending Title III of the Town Code entitled Administration, Section 30.23 Special Meetings and Sections 30.25 Order of Business effective May 1, 2015. Mayor, members of council, this is merely an ordinance that will put into place those things that we did at our work session, you've already adopted the resolution, and this is just bringing back the ordinance to codify the code. What we're doing in this particular ordinance is we are changing the invocation so that our code will read a moment of silence, and we're also allowing two members of council to call for a special meeting. This is a first reading only. Does anyone have any questions?
Anybody have any questions, Lisa?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Brought up tonight with our executive session, should that be on this agenda? In the event that we have an executive session, when we have it?
I don't know if I'm understanding your question, sir.
Well, we talked about on our agenda, the order of what we do.
Yes, sir.
And executive session is not in that order. Talk about the roll call, the call to public, and then consent agenda, unfinished business, new business.
This is just for a regular meeting, the executive sessions are added special. If you would like, we can put a placeholder for executive sessions. Sometimes, depending on the issue, you have your executive session prior to the meeting, and sometimes you have it after the meeting. It depends on who's necessary for the executive session to occur. So a lot of times, if we have attorneys from out of town, we will try to have that executive session prior to the meeting, yet still come into the public and have our public meeting at six o'clock.
Okay.
Any other question? Need a motion?
This is first reading only.
Oh, excuse me. Who? I was going to make a motion. I thought I heard somebody say something.
This is a first reading only.
Okay, that's right, wasn't someone reading. Okay. That'll come up next week, or in two weeks?
Yes, it will, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Item D, ordinance number 627-15, discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, amending Title III of the Town Code entitled Administrative, Section 30.73 Dates of Election. Mayor, members of council, this ordinance merely corrects our code to allow for the consolidated election law to take place. It moves our primary elections to August and our general elections to November per state law. and our general elections to November per state law. This, this is not a first reading because this is a regulatory ordinance.
Anybody have any discussion? Lisa, I guess, I guess the only thing I have, uh, the only way that we could do this and get it back to what it was would be going against the state law, is that correct?
The, well, charter cities are allowed to set their own dates. Um, so if the council ever wanted to consider being a charter city, we could get a, um, legal on that. That's, that opens up a whole nother issue with, um, being a charter. Your charter then has to be elect, your, your electors have to vote on every charter amendment. It's a, it's a different process than the Town of Florence has been through as a general law city. But you're correct, that general law cities all are required to go with this state law.
I see the, the state is trying to go against the federal government. I just wonder if we shouldn't go against the state on this election law because it, it's a bad law. It, it's hurt a lot of elections. Okay, any other discussion? Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 627-15.
Second. We have a motion to second to adopt ordinance 627-15. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item E, ordinance number 628-15, first reading of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending Sections of Chapter 232, Town Organizations. Mayor, Member, Council, this again corrects, makes corrections and modifications to the Town Code. What we're doing is we're adding in, um, the Arts and Culture Commission that you've already created. We are, um, providing that no member of any board or commission shall concernately serve on any, more than one board or commission. We are allowing our officers of our boards to conserve, serve more than two consecutive years. That means a chairperson can serve, chair their, their board for more than two consecutive years. And we are appointing the town council as the redevelopment commission, as well as changing the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to monthly meetings. You've seen almost all of these items before, we've done them by policy, we've done them by resolution, now we're merely codifying the code.
City members of council, have any question? Need a motion?
No, it's first reading.
Is this first reading also?
First reading, sir.
Okay, that's good, we're doing a high total vote on it.
Item F, discussion approval disapproval of the town council argument to be placed in the 2015 Special Election Publicity Pamphlet. Mayor, Members of Council, um, we are having an election, a special election that will be on March 19th. As part of that election, a publicity pamphlet is required?
May.
Did I say March? I apologize. May 19th, um, today, it's...
It's going double date, Mark.
And as part of that election process, a publicity pamphlet is required. Um, this particular, um, election does require the council to submit a 200-word argument in favor of the proposition. This has been vetted through the, the Budget Committee, and the mayor has seen this. We are coming to you to ask you if this is the que- if this is the argument you would like to put in the paper for, um, approval.
And this will go out, uh, in the public, uh, publicity in- information, correct?
It will be in the, it will be in the, um, publicity packet that gets sent out to every registered voter. Those should be going out in the mail about April 23rd. I've also included in the item, the argument that went to the paper, the invitation to submit, um, ballot arguments. Any citizen has the right to come down and submit an argument even in, in favor of the, of the, of the proposition or against the proposition, and that is included as well.
Any member of the council, any questions, Lisa? Hearing none, need a motion?
I make a motion to approve the town council argument to be placed on the 2015 Special Election Publicity Pamphlet.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Manager report, you got anything to report?
Mr. Mayor, Council, no, we will have a significant report at the first meeting in April, March thus far has been fairly busy. We did put a copy of the legislative bills, we're keeping track of those, uh, with the lobbyist, uh, up, uh, in Phoenix, so right now, we will make sure we have you a clear update, not just from the lobbyist, but the manager's report, first week of April.
Thank you.
I do have a question on that. Uh, you know, there's so much on here, can you highlight what we should be looking at or what would be of interest to our town?
Mr. Anderson, yes, sir, Council, we will do that.
Okay, thank you.
One word. One word in there.
Yeah, one word.
Or. That's where the whole thing lays.
Yeah, well, it certainly is.
He'll get that to you. Any other? Okay, this will be second call to the public. Anybody in the public have anything I'd like to talk about under the same rules we had on the first call to the public? Seeing no movement, I'll call, it's call to the public, call to the council, John?
I have nothing.
Thank you.
I'd just like to, uh, make mention that my aunt Clara Jimenez, who is a longtime, uh, Florence resident, had passed away and was buried this week. She had many, uh, children that have been leaders in the community in, uh, Florence here and in the state of Arizona also. Thank you.
Clara's gonna be missed. Bill?
I have nothing.
Barry?
I don't have anything.
Tara?
I want to thank everybody that came out tonight to speak, and... If I had the ability, I would like to do something. However, I do not have that ability, so that's all I had this evening.
I'm sorry, Tom, but there is one thing.
Go ahead, Bill.
Uh, I think this would be the time, but, uh, can we maybe look at, uh, having that sign deal looked at again on the next agenda? Being as there is some concern amongst the community. I'm referring to the new development signs here at the Aquatic Center in the library.
Mayor, Council, um, as that item's come before you a number of times, I need to get clear direction at some point to put that on. I gotta check with Mr. Eckoff to see if we've already notified the contractors on that as well. So if you'll allow me to give me that time to do that, and, uh, I can come back with you, I'll communicate with you directly and see if we can do that.
Well, at this time, it's just a matter of how they're mounted. It, it wouldn't matter how it's written, I mean, you just turn it, right? I mean, the letters aren't gonna be, I mean, it's gonna run one direction to the other, so if you, I mean, it's doable, I would think, at this point, wouldn't it be, I mean?
Uh, Councilmember, I think I'd have to defer to Mark Eckoff because I think the letters are different if they're going up the side versus above. The lettering is entirely different.
Why would it be different? Well, whatever. We can see if we can get it on the agenda one way or the other.
The, uh, fishing derby, how did it go? I guess it went okay. Uh, I think that we need to take a look at the future fishing derbies due to the fact that I don't know how many catfish bite during the day. They're a night feeder.
Ma- Mayor, Council, it was a little slow.
That's what I thought. I want to thank you on the recreation program for the soccer that just got over. Very successful, a lot of kids down there playing soccer, a new sport. And our new field will really do them good rather than play in the pond for the fishing pool.
Absolutely.
Uh, also want to remind everybody that there is coming up a poker run, motorcycle for the Special Olympics. That's gonna be held, it'll be held on, uh, April 18th, and start here at the park, and, uh, go to Oracle, then Globe, then back to Florence. Uh, information, you can get ahold of, uh, people out to prison. We'll have this posted on the board out here, so if anybody is interested in it. Uh, and again, it's for Special Olympics. And I'd like to just have my say on the sign. I don't know, we have 70 signatures on the petitions, but I don't know what those people were told to get their name on the petition. I have no problem with what we, the decision we made last meeting. I think it was a decision that we all agreed on. Uh, whether it gets come back on the agenda, it's, it's up to the council's decision. If we put it back on the agenda, if two or three of you want to have it back on the agenda, please notify, uh, Becky, or, not Becky. Put you back to work, Beck. Uh, Lisa, uh, also remind the council, we've got all these meetings coming up on the election, Lisa's arranged, they're all on the calendar, you see the times and everything. We need you there. There've been, two of us have been attending most of the meetings, and it's, it's kind of rough. Uh, the public wants to see the other council, and we're all behind us, and get it done. So... With that, need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second. We have a motion to second to adjourn to executive session. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
When we come to the one item, I will be recusing myself and leaving at that time.
And we'll try to get that one out of the way in a hurry.
In reference to the association, I believe it was item number three?
Yes. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.